Jesus' name, amen.
Ask clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Plutin here from Washburn.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Johns.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
And Councilmember Seaman.
Okay, next on the agenda is petitions and comments. That's time on the agenda for anyone to address the council on anything that's on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the council, come forward. If it's not on the agenda. Okay, petitions and comments. Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as presented by the town clerk.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Presentations, we don't have any. Consent.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, to, uh, keep number one on the consent, but, uh, I'd sent a note earlier today asking Rodney to be able to provide us some insight on items two and three. But I'd move to approve number one, and then, uh, following the discussion, we'll know how to address items two and three.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Regarding the ordinance amending the operating budget, if I can get to it, pass the vehicle. The, um, one, if you could, just tell us a little bit about the, of course, we, we talked, had some discussion, but I don't think it's been formal, public aware of it, but the, uh, the net result of a, of a position in, uh, communications, and then address the issue of the use of fund balance.
The town council, yeah, back in May, probably May, June, back in the spring, we're having, uh, budget deliberations. We had the opportunity to, um, hire, uh, an employee from East Wake TV or Peg Media Partners, as they're, I guess, more formally known as, to come onboard with the town and, um, help us produce more videos and more, uh, media, um, production. And at the time, uh, we were waiting on the, a vote of the full, uh, Peg Media Board, and that hadn't happened. And so, um, we, the council said tentatively that we would, we could wait until that decision was made and that we could, um, bring that person on probably in the August or so timeframe, because of some personal things they had going on too, family, um, things they had going on. And so that happened, and we brought that person onboard, and the, um, the way that was gonna work was we would receive half of our, uh, Peg Media money back from, um, the money we get from the state to operate, that have, having a channel. We would get half of that back, and, um, that wasn't quite enough to fund the position. So we're looking to, um, bring over, a little over $2,000 to help supplement that, and $2,267, and it's proposed that that would come out of the fund balance. And, um, the, uh, finance director, Pam Worthing, is here to explain how that will work, the fund balance, would you?
So this will be two people in communications, and this is to take it through the rest of this year? And then the two full-time positions will be in the following year for the budget.
Correct, that's correct.
This one new addition, in addition to the one that was already there?
That was already, it would be in the regular operating budget. As a regular, um, authorized employee for four years.
And the net increase, as you say, is $2,267.
Correct, for this year.
Okay.
Until July the first.
Good, thank you. I, I thought that information was perfect to be, uh, explained to Pam. Pam, if you could, give us some highlights of the, uh, how we've used the fund balance, if you would.
Yes, really. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. In the budget for this year, we have budgeted $549,505 in appropriations from fund balance. The bulk of that, about two-thirds of that, is for replacement of radios for the police department and fire department. So, um, those are, that's a one-time expenditure, and you agreed to, um, to fund those. So we started the year budgeting a little over a half million dollars out of fund balance. We have brought to you four different budget amendments. I believe it's four. The first one was for purchase orders from last year, things that did not, for which we received the goods but had not been invoiced, uh, for them, that we were oblig- obligated to pay for. Uh, that was $940,000. Actually, some of these were not received, but we had obligated ourselves to pay for them. So that was $940,000. That is a standard, um, uh, standard procedure that we use every year. Then, um, we had another $3,600 that we needed for the utility customer assistance program through Wake County that we agreed to help, uh, customers with their water bills. We need an additional $3,600 this year. When we were doing our budget deliberations, we were not aware of exactly how much was gonna be required. We also had some copier overage charges, that was $20,000, that should've been paid for out of last year, but we were not aware of, um, a flaw in the way our copiers were not communicating to our copier supplier of how many copies we were using. And then the final thing that we had requested was, um, it was a, a dual, uh, budget amendment. One was $13,800 for a lift that failed at the flea garage, that they had been requesting, uh, for a couple of years, and it finally did completely fail. We requested that, along with $50,000 for legal expenses that we felt like we might need this year. That brings our total that we have budgeted with the half million we started the year with at $1,576,901. As we have done in the past, we don't anticipate that we will necessarily need all of this. In the past, we haven't needed any of fund balance for this purpose, but we do budget it because we have to have a balanced budget.
And the first $500,000, was that an even number?
It was $549,505.
That was for?
Um, the, two-thirds of it, $362,000, was for replacement of the radios in the police department and the fire department. That was, um, and, uh, we had, uh, the master plan update for parks was $37,000. The first installment for the UDO was $50,000, um, and then a few other minor things.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anything else?
Mayor, is it appropriate to, to take these one at a time? Because I'm ready to move to approve this item.
I think so, yeah, go ahead.
Move to approve item number two on the consent.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor.
The third item was, uh, is, is requesting us to, uh, authorize execution of an agreement, uh, if, which is a stipulation of dismissal of a lawsuit. From time to time, this town is, people bring a lawsuit against us for a variety of things. From time to time, you will hear us go into closed session to discuss a potential lawsuit, or to give advice, or to hear an update. Recently, you've heard of, heard us on TV, do that several times. This most recent one had to do with a contract for the police department, which terminated, finished up two years ago, just about this time. And that, uh, there was some disagreement there on to finishing up and the cost of some items, and we withheld some funds from the final contract. The town was sued by the contractor, rightfully so, if they, that's what they choose. They choose to sue the town to reclaim those dollars, went through the long process. Uh, it came out on the other end, is that the, uh, the town, uh, was sustained in this position, and now the, uh, there's a stipulation to dismiss the lawsuit with no further payments by the town. That's it, in a nutshell, without getting into any specifics, but when you hear us go into closed session, there's a reason behind it. In this case, um, we, we can tell you, we, we can't discuss the, the, all the details while it's in progress, but this really lets you know that from time to time we're sued, this time it's solved, we're moving on. That's what I wanted to get out there, to let, just to let people know that, you know, air the laundry, good, bad, or indifferent. Anything else that needs to be said?
Mr. Kennedy.
I had to, along with you, into whatever kind of explanation it took, but I don't know, I don't know of a thing I could add that would shed any more light than that. Lawsuit's over, town didn't pay contractor any money, so that's it.
Move to approve item, item number three, which is a stipulation of dismissal of the lawsuit.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor, vote aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me, uh, go through those basics.
Okay, we got two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The first is a quasi-judicial hearing for Transsource and a public hearing for comprehensive closed amendment. Mr. Henderson.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fortunately, uh, since we don't have a zoning connection with this one, I'll give the brief version tonight. The, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm referring to is that, uh, on certain types of cases that the town, uh, has hearings in, we are required to, um, treat them slightly differently from ordinary zoning or land use cases or ordinary budgetary hearings or whatever. These are, are special use, uh, applications and condition use applications are, uh, in a class of hearing called quasi-judicial proceedings. Quasi-judicial, meaning sort of like a court, and it means in these proceedings that there are formalities which have to be followed as an order, uh, to the presentation of the, the evidence. The evidence is given by people who are sworn, uh, or affirm, uh, an oath, very similar you take in court. And, uh, the, the testimony is basically of a technical nature, given by expert witnesses, people who have expertise in land development, engineering, landscaping, or whatever, uh, land planning, whatever the qualifications are of the speaker. So basically, um, uh, there'll be two things that we'll do. Right before we start, I'll ask everybody who plans to give testimony in this case to come forward and have the oath administered by the clerk. And the other thing that we will do is, um, part of what the, um, legislature and the courts have required towns to do in these cases is to, uh, take every, uh, effort to ensure that, uh, that the applicant and the parties to the case have a, a fair and impartial hearing. And so one of the things that is my duty to, um, to, to ask, uh, the members of the, the council is, uh, whether any of you have any biases, uh, in favor or, or opposed to, or to, to the application that would, uh, prevent you from, uh, giving a fair and impartial decision. If you do, uh, please say yes, or if you don't, just say no. I take it there's no? And the other thing we have to do is to determine if, um, anyone has had what are called ex parte communications, uh, with an applicant or, or an opponent of the application. An ex parte communication is a, uh, a communication by telephone, email, uh, in person, whatever. Regarding the merits or the details of the application, uh, between, say, the applicant's representative and a town council member, uh, those are, are not allowed in these cases, and so, uh, basically, uh, the law says that if, if one of those has inadvertently happened, we can cure it by having disclosure of that, uh, uh, communication having taken place. So my, uh, next question to the council is, have any of you had any ex parte communications from anyone regarding this case? And if the answer is no, we're ready to proceed. I'll ask everybody who is, uh, gonna testify in this case to come forward and have the clerk administer the oath.
Okay, as the attorney mentioned, if you have any ex parte communication to disclose, you can do it now. Does anybody have anything? Everybody's good. Okay, uh, first item to SGP, SP 1705, Transsource Garner Facility. I'll open the public hearing. SGF Theresa Merg, come forth, provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our first meeting without Ms. Solavy, so I will attempt to, uh, finish this case off for her in good standing. Uh, this is Transsource Facility, uh, coming to you from the Planning Commission meeting at their regular meeting in December. Uh, the applicant is Transsource Incorporated. The owners are Greenfield 40 Associates LLC. Uh, the location of this project will be at 4200 Waterfield Drive, which is in the Greenfield South Business Park. Uh, the tract combined, uh, that is being discussed is 17.36 acres. In terms of site plan conformity, um, we have looked at the need to, uh, recombine the parcels. There are actually two parcels that are involved in this request, uh, so they will be recombining those two into one. Uh, currently, one parcel is within the town limits and the other is in the ETJ. So that will be, um, a condition of the final recommendation in the, uh, special use permit. Here is the site. Waterfield Drive, South Greenfield Parkway, I-40. Uh, this site is directly adjacent to I-40, so the I-40 overlay requirements do come into play. Uh, there is a Duke Energy Transmission Line easement running from southwest to northeast that, uh, clips through the southern portions of the property. Uh, most of this zoning in this area is still a carryover from the previous, um, ordinance. Uh, so it is a mixed development district, which is now obsolete, but we still carry it forward with, uh, certain requirements. Uh, as mentioned, the I-40 overlay does apply around it. You primarily have a few vacant parcels still, um, but most of the area is being developed for manufacturing and warehousing. Um, across I-40, you do have the apartments there at, uh, Adeline and Aberley. And to the south, some truck leasing and service facilities. The particular use proposed for this lot is truck and trailer sales, as well as service and leasing of those vehicles. Uh, the total building size is a little over 43,000 square feet, and will consist of office space in the front and service bays in the rear. Uh, the architecture consists of a, uh, two-story portion that fronts Waterfield Drive, uh, that will be finished with a combination of brick, block, and architectural metal panels. Uh, the service bay portion fronts I-40, but will be, uh, screened by that, uh, buffer that is required to, uh, stay in place along I-40. Um, and the rest of the building is typical varying shades of grays. Uh, this is not a color rendering per se, but a black and white with the windows emphasized. Um, here at the bottom, you can see, this is the elevation that will be facing Waterfield, um, where their offices are located. This is the south side, again with the offices, Waterfield over here on the right. Uh, I-40 will be off over here to the left. Uh, you can see currently they have proposed seven service bays. Uh, they have provided in their site plan for an optional expansion in the future. So we have taken that into account, uh, in review of our site, in review of the site plan. Of course, signage will be a separate submittal, but they have shown approximately where, um, they might like their signage to go. Here's an artist's, uh, rendering of what that building would look like. In terms of landscaping and buffer requirements, uh, the proposed plan does meet the requirements of our ordinance as well as the I-40 overlay district. Uh, the tree cover is met with existing preserved, uh, tree areas. There, uh, were street buffers required, 25 feet along Waterfield Drive. Um, that has been met with a combination of the street trees that they are gonna be putting on-site, as well as their VSA screening, the vehicle service area shrubs. And it will be determined if existing trees, um, meet this requirement or if they will have to add to what they preserve during construction. Again, with the I-40 overlay, there is a 50-foot undisturbed buffer required. Um, again, we'll be making in-the-field determinations, um, as to whether or not the existing vegetation meets screening requirements. Uh, they have proposed a little bit of extra space adjacent to that buffer to accommodate additional plantings as needed. Perimeter buffers, um, so those not facing either I-40 or Waterfield Drive. There is a 15-foot buffer required on the north and south property lines. Um, there's about 180 feet linear, uh, that will require newer supplemental plantings. Uh, the existing vegetation, though otherwise, will meet, uh, the requirements for the remaining portions of those buffers. For parking, uh, this was based on the number of service bays, as well as the number of employees. That came out to a requirement for 90 parking spaces with four accessible. Uh, they had proposed 109 with five accessible. Fire protection, uh, this was jointly reviewed by both the inspections department and the fire department, and found to be in, uh, conformance with their guidelines and rules. Uh, there were no flood planes on this site. Um, there is, though, a feature that is subject to riparian buffer rules, uh, but they have not proposed any encroachments into that buffer, so everything was good there. Uh, for stormwater management, uh, it was required that they meet both the quantity and quality measures. Uh, on the water quantity side, they're proposing two wet detention ponds, uh, that are designed for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. And then on the water quality side, uh, the ponds will help to reduce the nitrogen, and they will also, or they have already, uh, made payment to a private mitigation bank, um, for this part of the business park. Action to public water and sewer is proposed, as both, uh, utilities are in the area. Uh, onsite sewer design will require construction drawing approval from the city of Raleigh. That would be the, one of their next steps following tonight's meeting, if approved. Uh, there will be two points of vehicle access off of Waterfield Drive, as well as sidewalk along Waterfield, with pedestrian connections from that sidewalk to the building entrance. And here is the site plan. I tried to turn it a little bit so that, uh, the north part of the property is actually facing due north. Uh, so again, here's Interstate 40, uh, cutting up from 42 towards 70. Uh, South Greenfield Parkway will be coming through down here, and Waterfield Drive coming up. Um, as part of this, to get the two points of access here off of Waterfield, you can just very faintly see that here is the edge of that Duke Power easement coming through here. Um, so it is gonna require a slight, oop, my bad. Will require a slight modification to the median on Waterfield, um, but that has been looked at and approved by the engineering department. Most of the customer and employee parking will be here in front of the building and to the north of the building. Uh, the service parking area for the vehicles is, again, to the north and west of the building. And then their display areas are here to the south for new vehicles that are for sale. Uh, so again, there was a challenge, uh, working with that Duke Power easement. It is pretty substantial. I wanna say it's 270 to 300-some feet. Um, so there are restrictions as, in terms of both lighting and landscaping that can be placed, uh, within that easement. Uh, but we did receive, uh, final approval or a letter of no objection, uh, from Duke within the last week and a half. Uh, the lighting plan originally did not meet the UDO standards, but they did revise the lighting plan, and it has been submitted, reviewed, and approved. Resulting changes to the landscaping plan were also met so, so that we can hopefully avoid any lighting landscaping conflicts. Uh, and there are two, uh, originally were two conditions that staff had proposed, but those issues, uh, have been resolved, and so those conditions are removed. Uh, as you can see here, I crossed out the "not yet." We did receive the letter of no objection from Duke Energy, um, and that was due prior to our council meeting here tonight. In terms of conformity with the Garner Transportation Plan, there is no additional right-of-way required for either Waterfield or I-40, uh, so therefore it is considered to be in confor- conformance with the 2010 Garner Transportation Plan. Um, there are no recommendations for this particular area, uh, in addressing our Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways master plan, so again, uh, therefore we consider it to be, uh, consistent with that plan. And finally, with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that after sufficient review and plan revisions, as we've gone over here tonight, staff does find the plan to be in conformity with the UDO. In terms of a recommended motion, um, we would direct you to your motion worksheet on page 16 of the agenda packet. And I will point out that the Planning Commission did concur with staff's findings, uh, that the plan does meet, uh, the requirements for granting a special use permit. And again, three of the conditions have been eliminated, and we are left with two that we would recommend being attached to this special use permit. One, that prior to issuance of a building permit, the two lots shall be recombined. And number two, prior to issuance of a building permit, an annexation petition for the parcel, identified as PIN number 1720931560, shall also be submitted. And that's all I have to present to you this evening. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have.
Councilmember, have any questions?
Not about the technical details, but curiosity, it, we are able to, one is able to park under the transmission lines.
Yes. As long as there are adequate clearance between the anticipated sag of those lines and the ground.
Well, I, when I first saw that, I was, I was tickled that you could do that. I was very, very much pleased. And, uh, and it looks like every bit of that site will be utilized, uh, with the, with, with the worst parts being the asset for the ponds, but, uh, that's, uh, looks like a real good use for the site.
I believe they had to make a few grading adjustments to get the grade low enough, but not too much trouble.
Okay. Good.
Or maybe I should ask the applicant, uh, I'm just curious to know the, uh, the type, are they, they're selling commercial-type trucks at this lot? And obviously servicing them too, I guess.
Commercial, commercial trucks and, um, vehicles, and then they would be servicing them as well, yes. You are correct. Sorry.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay, anyone else who took the oath, do you wanna come, address the council? Three and a half, close public hearing, call for vote.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council accept staff recommendations or staff statements regarding plan consistency in section four of this report, as our, um, and find the application meets the 10-permit criteria in section 3.14. D, and therefore approve SGP SP 1705 Transsource with the three standard conditions listed on the attached permit.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Call for a vote. Okay, the next hearing is to consider comprehensive growth plan amendment GP 1703 New Rand Road. I'll open the public hearing. Ask David Bamford to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request to amend the long-range plan intensities map. The, the area of the site is approximately 3.15 acres. It's located at the southeast corner of US Highway 70 and New Rand Road. Planning Commission did review this request back in August and did recommend approval. The request tonight is to amend the land use intensities map. This is on the current long-range plan map which was adopted in 2006. And the current future land use designation for this area is, is called a one-mile neighborhood secondary residential. And this future land use would be single-family between one to three units an acre. That's under the current designation. The requested map designation is neighborhood, neighborhood activity center. And this is a map of the current comprehensive growth plan. We do have an existing neighborhood activity center at Highway 70 and Benson Road. There's Hudson's Hardware on the north side. There's a shopping center on the south side. There's also a gas station in the Chamber of Commerce. This site here is primarily developed. There's also a neighborhood activity center located at the intersection of Aversboro Road and Pool Drive. I guess that's kind of in the bottom-left corner of this map. We have an employment center designation on Highway 70 in this area here. The, the address I believe is, is around 525 Highway 70 East. Farther to the east, we have a regional activity center and this covers the entire White Oak Shopping Center area going down White Oak Road and Timber Drive East. So the regional activity center is located to the east around the White Oak Development. The request is to designate eight tracks at the southeast corner from residential to a neighborhood activity center. And this is a, a boundary map which shows the addresses in this area. So it would start at 203 and go down to 213 and also include a vacant tract here which does not currently have a structure or an address assigned. This map shows land use in this area on the south side of 70. Directly to the west, we have a retail store. To the west of that, we have some professional offices. And to the west of that site, we also have a retail store. There is a barber shop service business that's located on this site. There are some commercial buildings that are located on both of these tracks here. The, the areas that are shown in tan or yellow are residential uses. Tracks that are shaded light gray here, 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 and here are vacant. And to the east, we have some highway business. We've got outdoor sales of ATVs. We have a boat service center here. So these uses here are primarily highway commercial. This is a picture looking south on New Rand Road of the area from Highway 70. This is a picture looking north on New Rand Road towards Highway 70. The boundary of this request would include all of this area. There are some residential homes within the boundary and I believe those are rental homes. So it would includes, it would include those sites as well as these commercial buildings and would also include, I believe, one vacant tract to the south. This map shows the zoning in this area. Again, the area outlined in yellow is the boundary of this request. This is the 3.15 acre area. Approximately one acres in the middle is, is two, two tracks. Those are zoned community retail. So, so these two tracks could be developed now as a retail business or a restaurant. Directly to the east, we have heavy commercial which is service business. To the west, we have community retail zoning and this would include the retail store, the ABC store at the corner, also include the professional offices and also include the Capital Pools business here. R9, this is a single-family zoning district and this is shown in green. And to the north, we've got some light and heavy industrial zoning on the northeast corner of New Rand and 70. We do have two residential homes here that are zoned for commercial use, leases community retail. And the northwest quadrant of this intersection is all zone, R9, single-family. And this red line here, this is the boundary of the US 70 401 overlay district. Any development that falls within this boundary is subject to the overlay standards. There are prohibited uses such as movie theater. There are restricted uses. There are restrictions on building materials. No metal buildings are permitted within the overlay district. And that's regardless of what the zoning is. So to summarize the request, the existing designation on the long-range plan is what's called a one-mile secondary residential area. And the recommended zoning within a secondary residential area is R12, R15, R20, and R40, single-family. Also RMH, which would allow manufactured home parks. And the recommended density is one to three units an acre. This is what the long-range plan recommends now. The request is to designate just those eight tracks that's on the southeast corner of 70 and New Rand Road as a neighborhood activity center. And a neighborhood activity center under the current long-range plan would allow the following zoning districts. Neighborhood, commercial, central business district, office and institutional, neighborhood office, and multifamily. Under a neighborhood activity center, the recommended residential density, if this is developed into a residential use, is up to nine units an acre. And I will stop now and let Jeff take up with the presentation.
So this is an area that staff has been discussing quite a bit, given our recent efforts with the Garner Forward process and updating our comprehensive plan. I would say that when I first came here three years ago, this was one of the intersections that was a little perplexing to me, just in looking at it on paper. And there's a couple of these that I think we have around town. And they are complex because of the existing patterns that you have and the conflicts that can arise between some of those. So I'm glad that we're having this discussion. I think we were having it anyways as a part of Garner Forward, but this particular one has kind of come to the forefront. Back up just briefly to the slide before. Again, not that every intersection would automatically fall to this, but when you read the definition of a neighborhood activity center, one of the things is that it's located at the intersection of a major and/or minor arterial. Again, this is one of those places in town where you have that. It doesn't mean that you have to have a neighborhood activity center, but it certainly would be supportive of the idea of having a neighborhood activity center. So again, just to recap, the request that came in to us was for these eight tracks and I understand that technically it might be seven and that there's just one that's split-zoned by a sliver. But they have proposed taking these eight tracks from residential to this neighborhood activity center designation. Again, one of the interesting things is that there are two tracks already that are zoned community retail. So again, as of today, that would really be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan as would any of the community retail on the west side of New Rand or on the north side of US 70. So we have some existing zoning, future land use conflicts. As David noted, the proposed change would increase the future development possibilities of intensity on those six remaining parcels. And that's something that needs to be looked at closely. This area of Garner, again, around this intersection, does contain that mix. There are still several vacant lots as well, so there is no established pattern in some areas. Among these non-residential uses, we have the ABC store, Hometown Realty, Capital Pool and Spa, Team Powersports, some various minor indoor and in some cases major outdoor storage areas as well as a community barber shop. In terms of traffic, again, I think kind of supporting the idea that the major and the minor thoroughfare designations, we do have 24,000 to 26,000 vehicles traveling eastbound on US 70 as of two years ago. For New Rand Road though, the daily counts are only about 4,300. So again, that is more indicative of a less intense kind of land use pattern. Just as a reminder for everybody, this is not a rezoning request that's before you tonight or even a development proposal. This is just a future land use discussion. Any future rezoning or development plan application would need to go through, again, a formal process and public hearing. Property owners within 300 feet would be notified per the UDO. Incidentally, we don't have any specific rule for comp plan amendments because comp plan is not covered by the UDO, but we default to that rule that we use for the UDO. So that was what David and our staff applied for the notification for tonight's case. Again, as David noted, any future development in this area would be subject also to the overlay district requirements regardless of what the underlying zoning might be at some point in the future. We do have restrictions on outdoor storage built in if somebody wanted to propose service business or a higher designation. And in all zones, we do not typically allow metal buildings. So when we looked at this request, we found that it could be considered to be consistent with prevailing land use patterns in the immediate area because there is a, there is a mix. There's not any one particular use that predominates or even zoning for that matter. Two lots are already zoned for non-residential use. There is one nearby non-conforming business in a residential zone, that being the barber shop. And there are several vacant lots once you're north of Smith Drive. Now, once you get closer to Smith Drive, that's when the residential pattern on both sides of the road becomes very solid and very distinct. Staff believes that a change in designation would be warranted based on the facts presented, particularly for the three residentially zoned parcels north of the existing community retail zone. But we do feel that the primary question to be answered now is how far south do we designate a neighborhood center and drawing the line in an appropriate location that both acknowledges the influence of Highway 70 but also respects and preserves the existing neighborhood? And this is the exact question that we've been dealing with in Garner Forward. And so we bring that kind of question to the forefront tonight. So when we looked at it, I'll take you back to the land use map. When staff has looked at this, we've kind of come up with three positions where we think that line might be drawn. This first one here would be at the southern extent of the current non, non-residential zoning. So again, these parcels here are zoned community retail and the land use is non-residential. Another option could be the southern extent of non-residential uses along New Rand Road, which this would put it at the request line, which is also in line with the location of the barber shop. Or we also looked at the southern extent of the thoroughfare overlay, which this parcel here is the last one to be included in any thoroughfare regulations. So again, from approximately here northward, there's no consistent land use or even zoning for that matter. As you do move southward along New Rand, even though you do have a church and some vacant parcels, the use predominantly right up against New Rand is residential as it is along Smith Drive, as it is along Bagwell Street. And so therefore we do recognize the need and the desire to preserve the existing neighborhood. So with that, we'll leave that question posed to you and take any questions, David and I, and certainly to hear from anyone here in the audience and take any questions.
Yes, to the council first.
Jeff, from many of these hearings that we have and have had, transportation is, is often an issue and concern. I noticed that, I believe the wording was that there was an estimate of 4,300 vehicles, I guess, on New Rand Road. Does, does your staff or do, does your office anticipate or have any way of estimating reasonably accurately what new development there would do in terms of increasing the traffic flow?
I wouldn't say that we have anything. I would guess that given the lack of a significant amount of traffic increase from the ABC store, I would think that the majority of the traffic, the larger percentage, would still be coming from 70 and getting back on 70. I don't know that there's that much increase coming up New Rand. I'm sure there's some because you do have folks living in the area and maybe points further south along Benson Road. But again, 70, I think is your, your larger factor and I would expect most traffic to be coming from and continuing back on. But that's important to where I think you draw the line as well. How far south.
Okay. Moving from that topic, wherever, if, 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 if we redesignate this area through the go-forward plan, wherever the boundary we determine, could you explain to folks here what that boundary would comprise? That is, in terms of buffering for the last commercial or whatever entity is there as it moves from there to the next property owner? What, what kind of a boundary, if you will, would, 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 I'll use the term, would protect others?
So this is your, this is your policy document for guiding future zoning decisions. So where you place this line would determine in the future the viability of rezoning requests coming in. If it's in this, in a neighborhood activity center, then those zoning requests that are supportive of that would be viewed more favorably going forward into the future. But somebody coming in with a non-residential request outside of that line in the residential area would not. So again, this is your policy. So again, this is your policy document, and this is what guides your future actual zoning decisions. So this would, this would help demarcate where, where you would allow non-residential and where you would preserve residential.
Okay. And the intent of the boundary, and I'm reading from page 26, you may have already covered this, is to protect the existing residential neighborhoods, or that's considered to be an important protection. And the boundary needs to be clearly defined, and the Garner Forward map attempts to do that, as I understand it, and that's a separate topic. But anyway, that's all the questions I have for now. May, Mr. Mayor, if you go around, everybody may have another question.
Yes, do we know what the proposed use will be, or if it becomes a neighborhood activity center, what do we, what can we expect to go there?
I would refer you to, basically to the UDO. David highlighted some of the uses that would not be allowed or severely restricted due to the overlay. But basically, you're looking at anything that would be allowed in community retail or in any of the office districts or the neighborhood commercial. So it's not your service business uses, it's not your heavy industrial uses like you have to the east. But you're going to be pretty much at that community retail level and down.
Okay. And my second question is, do we anticipate that access to it would be primarily on New Rand Road, or both 70 and New Rand Road, or only on Highway 70?
That's going to be subject to DOT because they're both DOT-controlled roads. I would expect there'll be an egress onto 70, maybe there'll be a ride-in off 70. Well, I guess it would only have to be that because you got the median. So I would anticipate both.
Jack?
Well, I have a great concern about this proposal. If you turn over on page 27, it says this site contained two-track zoned community retail and six for rest of the, if you drop down to the last paragraph, it says the current 2006 plan did not designate the intersection of New Rand Road and United States 70 East as an activity center. And if you look up on the map, you will see you have several activity centers within a mile of each other. And to give a little background history, Ronnie and Gray may remember, when Highway 70 was turned to a double lane, the track of land where the store was, Mr. Hayward had a grocery store over there. And he came in and wanted that board to change the zoning over there. That's how the grocery store was put on the other side of the street. And then later on, the Davis came in and put a barber shop in, then Dr. Hayward, which sold some of his property to the town of Garner for our recreation center, had a restaurant there. And when they closed the restaurant out, several people purchased it over a period of time. And there was one person that purchased the property. When they put a restaurant back then, he went to the Department of Transportation to get them to put a turny lane so he could get out of the restaurant. And the Department of Transportation told him they was not going to fix that lane because it was too close to the intersection, because there was only three houses, well, two houses in the store. And if you leave New Rand Road and go south, if you go over to Rand Road, there is only three strips of land that is designated as business. Several years ago, we had a company that wanted to put a hardware store at the intersection of Rand and New Rand. And the community did not want it, the board turned it down. And Mr. Gray purchased those lots, and he had two of his kids that build a home there now, and they're beautiful. And I'm saying all of this to say that, to infringe on the property owners that already have been there for a number of years, to bring a business into a neighborhood where there's all, most, nearly everyone there are retired. And they don't need that kind of traffic there. There is enough property in Garner that's available for them to put this, whatever they want to put there. We don't know what they're going to put there. And I can't understand why we could not wait until we did the whole master plan for Garner to do this at this present time. Now, I traveled that road this afternoon, and that 4,300 cars travel, it's going to be more traffic than that. Because I sit there this afternoon on Smith Drive and watch cars go by, and I had to wait about three or four minutes before I could turn into New Rand Road. And with all those senior citizens down there, you don't need that in the community. I'm not opposed to progress, but with all these designated centers that we have around, it will not enhance the community, not now, Bill. Plus the fact, once this is approved, the next door neighbor will have the same problem, not wanting. And eventually, all those senior citizens with parents, grandparents left them home, they're going to wind up being moved out. And I'm not saying all of this to say I'm against progress, that's not the issue. But there is a designated place for certain things to go. So I challenge the board to consider this very seriously, and I don't think neither one of the board members would want this, this close to their rest of their, especially with their parents and their children. There's no kids in that community to mouth anything. I raise my case.
Go ahead, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one of the biggest questions I have about this is, I don't quite understand if the goal to adopt Garner Forward where this recommended, recommended change is this activity center at this intersection, is coming up in February or March, let's say March, we're only two months away. And why the rush to do it, as it says on page 23, it's not associated with any rezoning or development plan application at this time? And if there is such a rush to do the amendment, why the person who is trying to assemble this land would not come out and tell the community what the proposal is? And I know two lots are zoned community retail, and you could probably get the top two lots behind 70, change the community retail, because you've got a, got a line drawn there where I don't think anyone, anyone at this time may want it to go any further to the south. I just had that question, staff, you've written in here twice that there's no development plan at this time. The developer hadn't said anything. I just, again, why the hurry then? Why don't you wait for the plan to be adopted or go through a public hearing and talk about it in March? I don't understand why it's got to be two months early unless the plan's on the way. And if the plan is on the way, why couldn't it be discussed with the residents so they know what's going on? I, you know, I understand that this fronts a major US highway and eventually there's going to maybe some retail there one day. The question I have in regards to Highway 70 is, we know that DOT is planning to replace the bridge at Highway 50 over Highway 70 sometime in the next couple of years to start construction. And we had asked about even participating from a funding standpoint, because we understand that parts of 70 may be three lanes wide on each side. That bridge is going to be designed for three-lane wide, three lanes of traffic on each side, correct? East and west bank, correct? So eventually, one day, there's going to be three lanes of traffic coming probably from at least Highway 50, if not further, all the way to Highway 40. So it's going to be three lanes all the way. I mean, DOT is planning for that, which will increase even more pressures to develop some of that from a retail standpoint. However, Mr. Johnson raises a very good point in that you have many senior citizens who live down there, some of whom are here tonight, and many of those, some of those people have lived there 40, 50, 60 years or more. Some of them lived there when New Rand Road was, was, well, it's still the same, but I mean, it wasn't split by 70 like Carroll and Rand Mill and Montague, about 70 coming in. So you have some people who've been there a long time. And I understand the concern about the pressures of retail, excuse me, whatever it can be rezoned to up there and with this, within the parameters of the change to the long-range plan. So I understand the concerns, you know, quite a bit. You showed us, can you go back to the place, you showed us the three different lines, about how far south it could go? Say that to us again. Yeah, with community retail already, already, and two of the lots, I can see, you know, doing the top of 70, that's not going to have a great impact on further south. So that line, I can understand that one, that, that makes reasonable sense. But if you proceed further south, even though some of those lots are vacant, I understand it will encroach more and more residential, the residential law neighborhood. So, you know, again, it's, it's going to be an impact on the community, you know, if you're going to, in my, in my, should be thinking now, after looking at this before the meeting, you know, I can see changing the plan north to go to 70. That's, that doesn't have the impact on the residential neighborhood as going further south does. But I'll just throw that out there for now for the council, other people have some thoughts. But again, I do see the impact on residents who have lived there for many, many years. And going any further south than what is already zoned with that is something that I just don't know if that's a good idea at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would back up two or three more slides, I think in your original presentation, David, where you outlined the four intersection, I mean, the four quadrants to the intersection, that were, one more? This one's got the dark outlines of the four quadrants around the 70, New Rand Road intersection.
Is that right there, designated?
No, it's in our package. It's the outlines you got on, it's on our page 27.
Okay.
And I think you showed it earlier, right?
That's it.
That's it, right there. You would, if you, if the cursor will allow, show the, show the outline of the, of the properties and why they're so designated. Just explain this, this particular slide.
Okay. Again, this is the draft Garner Forward land use map. And the areas outlined in black is what the Garner Forward map is showing as a neighborhood commerce center. This is very comparable to the Neighborhood Activity Center in the 2006 plan. And the reason that the map includes all four corners is that this is, is taking into account the existing zoning and the existing land uses in the area. There's also some development pressures on the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest corner. So, so this area was also included in the draft map for a neighborhood commerce center designation. The, the purple areas are, is what the Garner Forward map shows for light industrial center. And the majority of, of this area is, is already developed. There's not really any developable land. So this is primarily matching up with the existing land use. We do have some mixed urban neighborhood designation for this area over here. Medium density residential would be the kind of the beige-yellow area. And this would allow, I believe, around, that's two, two to five or three to five units an acre under the proposal.
Let me interrupt you if I might. I'm looking at those multiple lots that are included in that highlighted heavy boundary. When the Garner Forward land use plan, comp plan, is presented to us, will this recommend, will the recommendation shown here, will that, is that going to be a part of the, is that going to be an integral part of the comp plan recommendation?
Yes.
And, and not parsing words here, but this says, and I'm not good on the, the planning language, but this says a proposed neighborhood commerce center, and it's showing two of the quarters, but I'm assuming it's, it means all four of them.
It means all four in this area.
And is that different than a neighborhood's?
Neighborhood activity center?
Yes.
It is a little different. Under the current plan, a neighborhood activity center would allow multifamily or high-density residential. Under the, under the, the, under the description for a neighborhood commerce center, multifamily is not an option. It's mainly indoor retail and service and office under the Garner Forward designation. So multifamily would not be recommended within the boundary of a, of a neighborhood commerce center. So that's one major difference.
Good question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You used the word indoor retail sales, so this would be no outdoor sales, no, no sort of business would be allowed, outside stores.
Right, so, yes, sir.
So it's all of the indoor related?
Yes, sir, so.
In any of the quadrant?
Yes, sir. So on, on the map, Garner Forward has a designation called Corridor Commercial. And the, the description for that type of use is would include outdoor stores or outdoor sales. Uses with, within a neighborhood commerce center, the way the description is worded, it's strictly for convenience stores, restaurants, offices, indoor retail sales.
There's another slide that was very succinct about what the applicant is requesting and what if, if we were to approve it or not approve it, but if we were to approve it, what it does allow and what it doesn't allow. And maybe the first thing I want to clear up, do we need, since we've been talking about it as a neighborhood activity center, do we need to clear up that which one is going to be, is, I mean, I can hear what you're saying.
Right. If, if, if this is approved before Garner Forward is adopted, it would be designated as a neighborhood activity center on the 2006 long-range plan and...
Using the old designation?
It would, well, under the current, it'd be under the current.
Yeah, current.
So, so when the Garner Forward plan was adopted, that would be re-designated to a neighborhood commerce center. It's very similar, but the major difference is multifamily apartments, things like that would not be a recommended use within the Garner Forward Neighborhood Commerce Center.
So the request is before us is to advance the action 16 to 90 days for this southeast quadrant and get, get that designation taken care of tonight and not wait?
That is correct. And any questions about the timing, I'll let the applicant address that.
Sure, sure. I totally agree. If, if we were to take action on this tonight, does it mean somebody, if they had their plans ready, I mean, and had been holding them back in their own shop, does it mean somebody could go to work tomorrow?
If, if this was approved, then, then we could receive a rezoning or site plan development.
Well, it's kind of a misleading question. If they haven't been through the process, they can't start building tomorrow.
Oh, no, no, no. They could submit the plans for...
Even if we were to take action tonight, even if that were the case...
Right, so...
This is what, saying what could be, could be allowed, subject to somebody submitting specific plans.
Correct, so...
And that meet the ordinance requirements. And that meet the ordinance requirements.
Correct. So if, if this is approved, and if the applicant moves forward with a rezoning or site plan, that would come in at a later time. It could come in as early as February. That'd be the earliest time we would accept the next cycle of plans. And then that rezoning site plan would go through a public hearing review and, and neighbors would get notified, and that would go through its own separate process.
Going back to the basics, this is not a request to approve a particular project tonight.
That is correct.
Okay. My next question is, is the applicant here or is a representative of the applicant? And can we hear from the applicant? You would tell us your, give us a name and address?
My name is Isabel Maddox, PO Box 946 Raleigh 27602. I'm here tonight on behalf of LRC and Ben Lenthicam, the property owner and contract purchaser. And Mr. Kennedy hit it right. This is a timing issue. Despite the differences in neighborhood activity center and neighborhood commerce center, and, you know, we're not really focused on our residential use anyway, they're the comparable designations under the old plan and the Garner Ford plan. The problem is that there, we started this process back in the summer, and at that time they were saying, well, Garner Ford's going to be approved in August. And then, then at first we thought, well, we'll go ahead and do, do this request for the comprehensive plan amendment, and we were thinking it was moving fast. Then our project slowed down a little bit, and so we thought, okay, Garner Ford, that'll get what we need for this property. And then it became October, and then November, and then December. And now we're talking February, but I've heard March or April as of, as recently as today. So the, my client, LRC, has this property under contract, but that contract doesn't last forever. And in order to go forward with a development project, they're going to have to know, get some kind of signal from the town council that this is something that the council would approve in, in concept before they submit a development plan. And you're exactly right, there's at least one more bite of the apple, a big bite, because any development plan has to come back through. It has to come through for a rezoning and site plan. And it'll be a conditional use case with a site plan. But before the prospective developer wants to spend the money to get a fully engineered site plan, they want to understand that the council is generally supportive of this type of development. So it's a timing thing that if we can get that approved tonight, then that gives them the confidence that they can move forward, that they can invest the money on a proposal, and certainly will we come back to. And we will have to do a TIA. We've already talked with NCDOT, and they've said, in this location, you're going to have to do a TIA. We understand that, but again, it's more money to be committed without having any feel for whether this is something that might be acceptable. So I think it's important to understand that right now, you've got on these four quadrants of this intersection, all sorts of uses and, and zonings. You've got the retail zonings on, on three of the quadrants and, and uses, but none of those are consistent with the current plan. And the Garner Ford will clean all of that up, but we're asking to go ahead and, and get cleaned up on these eight parcels that, you know, that David and Jeff have highlighted and circled in yellow on that map. All of these, all these quadrants are currently designated as, as secondary residential in the old Comp Plan. And, and the property to the direct east of this parcel is, got a really intensive service business zoning, and it has an ATV motorcycle dealership there. And that, that zoning, as you can see, goes way deep into the neighborhood. Possible uses that could be employed in this site would be, as Jeff and David indicated, convenience, retail, a restaurant, offices. Those are the types of things. My client's currently looking at several leases, but they're, those things, they get, have a conversation, but they're not sure, that nobody signed on the dotted line. We can't really move forward with those second level of contracts until we have an understanding of what the, where the council is on this issue. We did, we did have a neighborhood meeting on this case last week. I unfortunately was not able to attend. I got, I was planning on going as of 2:00. By 3:00 I was down with the flu and had to go home. But my understanding from that meeting was there were some concerns expressed, but they were more concerns about how deep into the neighborhood this was going to go. And their concerns were for further down the neighborhood than this property goes. And I see there's some, some neighbors here tonight. I'm sure they'll have comments. But I think it's, it's important to, to know that we did meet with them and we've, David Bamford and I have compared our mailing list for who was noticed about our meetings, and they were fairly similar lists. We didn't notice anybody on the north side of Highway 70, Highway 70 being an over 200-foot right-of-way, and we don't typically jump the bigger right-of-way like that for notice. But otherwise, we noticed within 300 feet. Again, I think it's important to understand that we will have to come back through the process for a rezoning and a, and a site plan. It'll probably come back as a conditional use case with a site plan. And so this body will see this case again. And we're certainly available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, come to the podium, state your name and address.
One question, and I apologize. Let me have your last name again, please.
Maddox, M-A-T-T-O-X.
Thank you, ma'am.
Could, could I ask one, Ms. Maddox, I appreciate you being here this evening. You heard some of the earlier discussion and saw the, the slide that showed the boundary lines. I guess the question I want to ask is, your representative client, is it sort of an all-or-none type proposition? Because if we, if we, as I recall, and maybe we can get them to put the slide back up, but as I recall, if we talked about, I believe it was the northernmost boundary line that would not encompass all of the lots that are being proposed. If, if, if the council were inclined to, to, yeah, there it is, to, to limit that, how much does that impact? I mean, is that...
I think that it has a significant impact on our development prospects. Although I, I can let my client, Mr. Abramovich, come forward on, if he has a different opinion. We haven't talked about that particular question. But I believe that to do what he's proposing to do, he needs the full eight parcels.
Hi, Robert Abramovich with LRC Realty. With respect to the lines, it's, tonight's the first time I had seen those in that, that depiction. I haven't had a chance to digest it, but essentially what that would do is, is cut the property roughly in half, probably a little less than in half. And I think we would need approximately the three acres to, to be able to redevelop that intersection, then not, not jam everything into one hard corner and be before you asking for, for three, four, five, six variances.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Are you at liberty to tell us what you have in mind?
I can't go any farther than what Isabel said. We have a confidentiality. We have several prospective tenants. It would be a commercial use that falls within the proposed zoning or land use designation, and that we would come before you again with a rezoning application and the required civil or engineering set of plans.
Okay, let me try again. Any council members?
Ms. Maddox, you mentioned a TIA, a traffic impact analysis. Can you describe what ideas so people in the audience would note?
Yeah, that's a traffic, sorry. There's, that's a traffic impact analysis where a traffic engineer is hired and they study, NCDOT will scope it out and say, we want you to study these several intersections in the vicinity. And they do traffic counts and they determine the impacts on the intersection. And they make recommendations as to, oh, you need to add a decel lane here or a turn lane there, you need to widen the street here. And the NCDOT then will make requirements on the developer to do all these, usually the things that are recommended by the TIA.
Thank you for explaining it.
One question. Looking at this map where you had the dotted line, the solid line beyond the property that you are interested in, how many vacant lots are there between that lot and the next house?
Mr. Lenthicam, can you answer that question? You're saying by, this, this property that we're talking about has, includes technically eight lots. It really looks like seven, but there's one little sliver that counts as a lot. So you're saying below that...
Below there is some vacant land. How many lots in between there?
One.
Just one for the next rest?
The zero is the last lot.
This is the vacant tract.
Well, several years ago, I think Ms. McAllister's father came in and paid to have his rezoned, and the community did not want it. So the community got together, paid him his money back, they turned it down.
Let me make sure everybody, are y'all through?
One other question. Which property is it, south or north of the last red line is the Harrison property? Can anybody tell me that? The Harrison property?
There's one parcel that, most of these are owned by Mr. Lenthicam, but there's one property owned by Milton Hennett.
Okay, now that's not what I'm talking about. The one that's occupied by Mary Harrison? So we're showing here.
See this?
217.
217.
217.
Does any member of the council have anything else before we go to the audience? Okay, if you wish to speak, come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Wilma McLean Dunston, and I live at 230 Nuurin Road, which is about 300 feet within, I guess, their proposed amendment property. You know, I've heard a lot of terms that's mind-boggling, almost incomprehensible, but it's not a matter of how deep it's going to be, the property lines or so forth, but it's about destroying the integrity of a neighborhood. I have lived on Nuurin Road for the past 59-plus years. Over those past 59-plus years, I have seen Garner grow into the award-winning All-American City. Also during this 59-year tenure, I have seen this quiet street become the focus of attention by many generations of planning boards. The residents of Nuurin Road are no stranger to Garner Town Council. Under the neighborhood organization, the concerned citizens of Garner, we met with the council and planning board about several items to include, one, the oil recycling plant, which closed down once the wind shifted. Two, the harmful effects of proposed cell phone towers in a neighborhood of citizens relying on pacemakers. Three, a legalized liquor house. Four, the installation of sidewalks so that a neighborly stroll would not become a walk of death. Five, a stoplight at the busy intersection of Nuurin Road and US 70. Six, the threat of becoming homeless when by the year 2000, there will be no homes on Nuurin Road, only commercial businesses, which it seems is heading in that direction 18 years later. Seven, rezoning efforts. Eight, deep ditches that had to be filled. And here we are in 2018, coming before you to plead our case again. Nuurin is a quiet, crime-free neighborhood. I can remember just one or two incidents when there were major events. It's the neighborhood where fathers and mothers raised their families and worked hard to make sure they left a little sum something to their offsprings. A neighborhood where every house contained your mother and father because it took a village to raise, raise a child. Back in the day, Nuurin was the place to be. Parents could not afford to send the kids to the wire boys' club, so there was an area at each home known as the basketball court. Although in no ways rich and fancy, the homes were filled with love, respect, and discipline. Nuurin Road is situated between two major thoroughfares, which makes this location a desirable, much sought-after piece of property. Most of the neighbors still know and like each other, and we love calling Nuurin Road home. This is one of the reasons why we are opposed to the comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood primary residential to the reclassification as neighborhood activity center. To make this change would mean that potentially, businesses such as a grocery store, pharmacy, service stations, warehouses, apartments, storage facilities, office buildings, retail stalls, and God forbid, who knows, maybe even a strip club, could be placed on this quiet little street which meant to be a community of residences. The integrity of the neighborhood would be destroyed, the value of our homes would go either up or down, traffic would increase. And let's face it, who would want to buy other than a business owner slash developer who would not attempt to pay for the memories made over the past decade? And we were even distressed to learn that tactics such as intimidation and harassment were employed trying to get homeowners to sell. I understand that many neighborhoods may be experiencing a similar type of growth, but you have the means and resources to make a change. Others may not be that fortunate. I consider it as being neighborhood gentrification, thus defined when the business owner or land developer comes in, buys property for pennies on the dollar, and sells for sometimes a 500% profit. Such which is such was the case when the developer bought a home about, for about $16,000, and it sold for $286,000. The same developer bought another home for about $20,000, and according to the county property appraiser, it sold for $262,000 10 months later. Then this results in higher property taxes for the remaining residents who will eventually be forced to sell at a much lower cost, or in some cases, have their homes foreclosed. Progress and growth is good. Progress and growth is essential for a town to become a city. Progress and growth is a good drawing card. Progress and growth is good for the economy of Garner, but progress and growth oftentimes comes at the cost of longtime neighborhoods and neighborhood integrity. An All-American City is comprised of both good neighborhoods and well-considered and planned development where everyone prospers. If a decision is reached tonight, we hope that both advocates of development and neighborhood integrity will be given equal, will be given equal, will be given equal and fair consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. equal, will be given equal and fair consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and all of you who are in attendance tonight. My name is Lily Sanders. I reside at 226 New Rand Road, Garner. I am a retired educator from North Carolina to Washington DC to Florida, Miami, Florida, Fairbanks County, Virginia, and back to the All-American City. Coming back here to retire, it was my expectation that I would come to New Rand Road where I would experience peace and tranquility and volunteerism. I am the owner of property directly across the street from Mr. Ben Lenthycum. Several years ago, the neighborhood got together and began, I believe, the process of putting a hold on changing residential New Rand Road to business. Now, my property was business property with all kinds of potential, but when those neighbors, including my parents, came to me, I had to wonder what is more important than the tranquility, the peace, the hard work and everything that all of those people had put into New Rand Road. And I agreed to have the property changed back to residential. Even today, it's residential. I don't know what's going to happen to my property, but I do come in protest tonight to the upset of the neighbors who I have seen over the many years that I traveled 95 from Washington DC back to Garner. These people who worked hard, Ms. Helen Phillips, the McAllisters, the Dobbins, and all of the people that I can't even call by name. I can survive it, but I'm more concerned about those neighbors who are losing sleep tonight because of the unseen things that are attempting to come on New Rand Road. It is my prayer tonight that you will put yourselves into the position of those people, Ms. Helen Phillips and all of the other neighbors, the Graves, all of the other neighbors who are wondering tonight what the town council is going to do. I urge you tonight to give it consideration. What is the rush? If the property will sell today, it'll sell a little while later. Give us a chance to die out before you take our property. I rest my case.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, my name is James Andrews. I am a proud member of Shalom Christian Community Church, 309 Holman Drive. Our pastor is Dr. Lola Fuller. I had no intention of speaking at all, but I clearly hear the cry of a absolute marvelous community in which this church is located. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you've visited our church, I know, on one occasion since I've been there. It's a nice piece of property, excellent neighbors, and one of the things we really love about that community, I think someone might have mentioned it earlier, I'm not seeing any crime anywhere in the neighborhood. No, we moved off Braggs, off Budworth Street, uh, to this neighborhood. And when we got to this neighborhood, I think it's, uh, Diggin' Purcell, I believe it's a little less than, little less than two acres maybe, pretty close to two acres, great piece of property. But I hear a community crying, saying, in particular when you're talking about seniors, that, "Hey, look at here, we are far," I mean, I love White Oak Chopping Center, right, but that's down on that end. It's an appropriate place where White Oak made it. But this is a neighborhood where families live, and I just, it just pains me to see my sisters and my brothers say, "You know, I grew up in this neighborhood. This is an important neighborhood. There are many other pieces of property, I'm quite sure, that's available in this area." Last point I want to make, related to the church. We want to be good neighbors. When the police department say, "We want to have a community conversation about body cams," we say, "Hey, Shalom, come over and talk to our folks. This is a good place to have this conversation." That is the kind of church we want to be. We want to support you, Mr. Mayor and council. We want to see you continue to develop, uh, this town where appropriate. I have no authority to say this based on, uh, from Pastor Fuller, but I always take risks. We do not, at least, uh, Diggin' and I, and we'll report this back to our pastor, we do not believe that it's necessary always to infringe on families that have lived there for such a long time. And in particular, when you talk about seniors, I, I've found, in just a little bit I've been here, there's a lot of traffic on Rand Road. I don't think your numbers are right. That's a lot of traffic on Rand Road, and even when I go out to do, uh, our giving away food on the, at the, further down the road, go inside, at those apartments there, sometime, you've got homes, houses on the other side and apartments on the, sometime I've got to sit there a while. And I think about seniors who are still, good drivers, but I'm sure that they're sitting there, "Take this chance or should I wait a while?" This is simply slow. And we just want to lend, uh, from Shalom Christian Community Church, our voice to say, you know, "Is this a rush? Is something gotta happen? Is there a way to even, if you want to cap it, cap it up there on 70, cap it way up on the hill there." But when you move from the top of that point down, you're moving into neighborhoods, old neighborhoods. Thank you so much with this opportunity to speak on behalf of Shalom Christian Community Church without, I want to make this clear, without the authority and authorization of my pastor, but I, I think she'll agree with me.
Feel like I've been to church. Anyone else?
Just a couple of follow-up comments.
I believe we have a speaker behind, I believe a gentleman behind would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead. No, I want to go, I want to conclude.
We'll try to hear from everybody calling you one more time.
My name is Frederick Hennett, and, um, yeah, as you'll see on the, um, papers that you have, my brother is Milton Hennett, and we are represented here, the Hennett family, by me and my sister, my sister and I, Angela Hennett. And, um, one of the things that I think that has been overlooked and has not been spoken to is that we still own a part of that property that's being discussed here tonight. And I believe that everybody's asking, "What's the rush? What's the rush?" It's because I believe the rush is myself, this is just my opinion, is for us to sell our property. This is, I believe, what the rush is. Uh, and not, you know, um, to throw any shade on anyone in particular, but that's one thing that's been overlooked. I was born in the house that I currently reside in on New Rand Road, the property 205 New Rand Road, right at the top. And I watched my parents work that property, keep up the yard, something I haven't been able to do right by that age, you see. But haven't been able to live up to their expectations as far as, uh, you know, upkeep of the, of the property. But they, they, I watched them sweat and cry and bleed there on the property and put it together to make it something comfortable and loving for six children to grow up in. My mother, we talked about it for years, was one that desired to have peace in her home. Anybody that knew her knew that she was all about peace and tranquility and love, very loving person. Had decided at some point that when she passed, she wanted to sell the property and to distribute the proceeds of the sale amongst her six children. And we're all still here. She left the property in my, in my brother's care, which lives in Texas. For the last 20 years, I imagine, maybe once a year, he came back to visit mother, maybe for a week, maybe two weeks, but we were there, taking care of her and the property and cutting the grass and doing all the things that's necessary to, you know, make a house, a home. The ABC Store just, they, I'm bringing it on up to date because I, I can take a long time with this, but the ABC Store, they just remodeled, put up a great big, brand-new ABC Store there. It was very pretty, you know, and all of that to the property. But there's somebody that lives right across the street that used to be an alcoholic, hey, trying to back out of that driveway, doing rush hour right before nine o'clock, right by there. And just imagine trying to get out of your driveway. Christmas season, the New Year's, you can't back out of that driveway. Normal days, it's hard. I'm a truck driver, and I'm good at what I do. On normal days, it's very difficult to get in and out of that driveway with the traffic the way that it is. Now, I know, whatever business they put on this property, after we've gone through all of the formalities and everything, I know how much it's going to affect the community. The traffic alone, Mr. John stated a while ago that he sat on Smith Drive for three to five minutes trying to get out of that tra, trying to get out onto New Rand Road. Just imagine what it's like for me and my wife, stepchildren, children, sisters, brothers that will visit my home, to get in and out of that traffic every single day. What a community center, or whatever it is that you designated as, would do to that community, traff, just traffic-wise, not counting the, the, the people that it would bring. There are people, there's going to be people in all of those cars that's going to have different ideas about the community, about the sanctity of the community and things of this nature. I watched a church being placed right next door to our home because it was designated the way that it was. And they put a church there, and them folk were holiness. And my mama couldn't sleep a whole lot of nights till they beat them drums all night long. They didn't go to church for an hour like we do. They went to church all night. Think about it. Not going forward, not the, all the planning, the business and the commerce, the money that it's going to bring into, into Garner. Just think about those few citizens down that road. It could have been your mother, could have been your grandmother, could have been your aunt or uncle, that's going to be living on that road when this business comes. It's a miracle. I sit in the car sometime, even at night, my sister would give it back out of the driveway and watch and waiting. The lights aren't synchronized with the traffic coming out of the ABC Store. There's no light there at the ABC Store, so you gotta look both ways, all kind of ways to try, just try to get out of that driveway. One question, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time, but one question that I have is, if this is approved tonight, what is it going to mean to me and my family, my wife, my grandson, my, my, my daughter that lives there in that house with me? What is it going to do? What is it going to mean tonight for us? Will, because it's been designated as commercial now, or, or, or family, planning center, however, whatever, I can't remember, but what is it going to mean to my family tonight? Will it be a rush for us to sell because now it's been designated, or some other thing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hennett, Mr. Hennett, Mr. Hennett, question. You said to your brother, that's a nameless, Nicky Hennett, he, he owns the property at 205, technically owns the property?
Technically, he owns the property, but all of us, there, there's six of us. There're four, four sisters, I have four sisters and me and my, and my brother actually own the property. But his name has been designated as the, the ex-executor of my mother's estate of her will and all of that.
So, Mr. Anderson may help me here, so can he sell it without your signature and your sister, you and your, your sister's signature? Do you have to have your approval to sell it? Do you know?
Can I add that?
Your sister Angela?
My name is Angela.
Come to the microphone so I can pick, pick up your voice for the record.
My name is Angela Hennett. I currently reside at 1508 Jeffrey Street in Raleigh. My home is 205 New Rand Road. I always tell people that's my home. I was born there, um, a couple of years ago. As stated, my brother Milton is the executor, executor of mama's will. But when we made the will, when she signed that will, she made it clear that the decision to sell would be a decision made by all children. Yes, he is the executor, but he doesn't, we're a family, so he doesn't do anything without our approval. We all get together and we discuss it, and we, if we decide to sell, then we, he, he's the one that, you know, she put in, as old people say, the oldest. So, they all leave things to the oldest person. Maybe not the wisest person, maybe not the best person, but they always start with the oldest, the oldest child to take care of all the responsibility for the, for the, for the others. So, that's what she did. So, the decision to, to be, to sell the property is, will be a decision made by all of us. It's six of us, all of us, thank God, are still alive. So, whenever that decision is made, we'll make it together. Is that answers the question? Is that answers the question?
Yes, ma'am. Your brother was raising the question, what happens pending some, whatever decision is made? Are you going to be forced to sell? Are you under contract?
I don't think we're.
Has anybody entered into a contract? Because if...
Now, we've got too many people. Why don't you sit down? Let's leave it at the podium. Sit down, please.
I can answer that.
I want you to sit down, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to crash. I apologize.
Do you know if you're under contract?
I don't know if we're under contract. My brother had signed some paper to negotiate with the property, but because he wasn't here, he's in Texas, the paper that he signed and faxed over, it was not acceptable because he has to be here in person. So, I don't know what, and nobody could tell me a clear definition of what that was. I was under pressure that he was on the contract, he was negotiating with him to sell. But because...
Perhaps an option.
An option, yeah. And because he wasn't here, he has to come here in order to make it legal, to legalize everything.
Thank you. Now, does anybody else over here want to say anything?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name's Ben Lenthcom and I reside at 4236 Landsberg Drive, Raleigh 27603. I've been a member of this community for a little over 25 years. And I owned the building up until last February at 128 U.S. Highway 70 East in Garner, Capital Pools and Spa. My wife and I have ran that business for a little over 20 years. We've used that building for our purposes. We've had Century 21, Sandy Calder, different tenants in the property over time. Also own two lots to the west of 128 that we bought that Otha Jones had. There was an old house, you may recall, it set up on, that was condemned. I bought that property from Mr. Otha and we tore the house down and cleared the lot and have maintained that lot. Back about 12, 15 years ago, my wife and I embarked on a situation. I like real estate. We had a business. We were fortunate that our business did well. And we started buying up rental properties. And the Rand Road property was there adjacent to where we are on 128. And we started buying just individual houses as they came along. We bought with the intent of developing, of course. We felt that the area was ripe for development with the residential, commercial on both sides. And in looking at the chart that you have here, it starts out at 203. That was a property that I bought out of foreclosure. The Hennett property, the 205 property is currently under contract with myself. Mr. Milton Hennett's realtor is present tonight. The 207 property is what we refer to as the fish market. That's the old barbecue place. I bought it from Paul Capps, who was wanting to do the same thing I was doing. 209, the Hennett, excuse me, the Hayward Grocery property, I bought that from a gentleman that had let dilapidate and fall in, and we use that for dry storage, both 207 and 209 for the Capital Pools building. The 211, I bought from an individual that was in pretty sad shape and we currently rent that. The 213, I bought it from the same individual that had 203 that was in foreclosure. The zero lot, or the 215 lot, is a vacant lot that I bought with the intention of being the buffer between the neighborhood and what things that we might plan. I don't know the exact setback, but I would guess it's probably 25 feet between commercial and residential. And so, that was the purpose of the vacant lot. We would have a good buffer there. We could sell that as a way of protecting the community. If you look east of there in 222, that's the motorcycle shop. It goes down past 217, which is Ms. Mary's lot. And so, her, the entire back of her lot is commercial. Then you look at the zero and the zero and the zero on the back, that's owned by the folks over at the motorcycle shop. And that, to my knowledge, is owned commercial as well. And they have a pass-through there in that lot that they haul telephone poles out of that back and they come out on Rand Road. The zero property butts up or adjacent to the barber shop, so that was kind of a line in the sand, like the planning folks showed. And that's just a gist of how we've tried to put things together. We've tried to make it a better place. We've tried to make it look better, increase the property values. And of course, it's our timing. It's what we plan to do. And that's why we're here tonight. We're not trying to force anybody to sell anything. Ms. Lily left her house to Milton. I have a copy of the will. She left it, it's loose to him. Anytime we've talked to Milton, he said he had to talk to his siblings about what he was doing and how he was doing it. Ms. Margie Axe is here. She represents Mr. Milton Hennett as far as the realtor on her side. So, she's here to answer any questions you might have about that. That property is contingent on the other property, selling, of course. And there's a significant difference in the, the price was offered for 217 as the other properties because of the complexity and putting everything together. I thank you for your time. Would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr.?
If you could clear it up just a little bit. I appreciate the explanation and some additional history of the community. The last thing you mentioned is that 217, that's not in yellow on this map. Did you say you own that or have an option on it?
No, sir, I don't own that. Ms. Mary Harrison, I believe her's last name, she owns that. She's been a good neighbor. When the zero property, which would be 215, it's a vacant lot, came available, I felt that that was a good purchase to provide a buffer between her and whatever we developed north of there. That was the purpose of that property.
There was something that was mentioned that was contingent upon some other sale. I didn't catch that.
The 207 property, the Hennett property, or, excuse me, 205, thank you. 205 is under contract.
Is that an option?
No, sir. I mean, we're basically under contract. I can buy it outright, but we would hope that it would transfer at the time we sold the other property. That answers your question.
There's only so much I need, legitimately, that I need to know about your business.
Yes, sir. Well, we were in the process, 205 is a key piece to the whole property, obviously. Okay? We need that to do everything that we're going to do. We have a retail contract, or, excuse me, a real estate contract on that property as we speak.
Does that mean you can, you can at your option, sole option, exercise it at any time that you want to?
Yes, sir. The property's bought contingent upon the agreement of the contract. It's there. And, you know, I don't know what they've had as far as sibling conversations or anything. That's, I can't speak to that.
No, I wouldn't ask. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
But Mr. Lenthcom, Ben had said, yes, he's been a neighbor. He's been, and I'm going to say this, Margie, you know, we talked about, we had a family meeting, we talked about this. It's been a thorn in our side, trying to, I'm trying to put this in a nice way. I respect him as a person, as a realtor, but some of the things that he talked to my mother about, about her property, just left a bitter taste in our mouth. Milton has not lived here. He's only heard. He's, you know, so when Mama, and I was with her the night that we went and we made her will, did her will, and like I say, she, her primary choice was to list all her children on the will. But the person that she hired as her attorney told her, no, that was not a good idea. You need to leave it to one person and let that one person be a spokesperson for the family. So, she, after some, you know, discussion among us, we said, okay, that will work. Knowing that no decision will be made until we all agreed on it. And like I say, our realtor, Milton, the realtor that he hired to manage things was there. We had a meeting and Milton was on, we did a conference call with him. We, all five of us were there and he was on a conference call. And we all discussed this. The last thing that I knew was that he had agreed he wanted to go on the contract, but we didn't agree to that. But he said he was going to sign the papers to, because he was under pressure, go ahead and sign. He needed to go ahead and sign, he needed to go ahead and make a decision, go ahead and do something. So, Milton signed the paper, he called, said, well, I'm going to go ahead. I said, well, I don't think you need to do that. And he said, well, this is not agreement to sell. This is a contract saying we are negotiating. Negotiating is different. What I was, what I was told, what I understand, is we are negotiating the sale. We were waiting for Garner, when they had to propose to rezon, we were waiting for the rezoning, to see whether it was going to rezon from commercial, from residence to commercial. That's what we were holding out for, trying to do that. But Milton being in Texas, you know, it doesn't affect him like it affects us. So, we were, like I said, we were all waiting. So, when I went to Texas, someone would talk to Milton. He said, well, he had faxed over some papers to Margie about the property, but because it was a fax copy, he needs to come here and sign the paper in person. They will not accept it. That was negotiation. So, as far as I know, there's no contract. We're still negotiating. He has not been here to officially sign anything stating that the property has been sold. So, that's where, and that's where the five of us are in there. That's the understanding that we have. So, this thing about he's on the contract, this is new to me because I'm thinking this, we are negotiating. He's got to come here and actually sign a contract in order for it to be a legal document. And he's not been here. And I don't know when he's coming.
Can I ask, I guess, something that's inobvious, but am I hearing you say, Ms. Hennett, that if you and four of your siblings, that is, five of you, had your druthers or had your preferences, you would just, you would just hang on to the property?
We would just hang on and wait. We're just waiting for Garner to see what Garner, what Garner, that's what we were talking about doing. We wanted to wait and see what the Garner plan, long-range plans, because like, I grew up there in Garner. I don't want to see the neighborhood destroyed. I don't want to see, even though I don't live there, but I consider it their home. I don't want to see the neighborhood destroyed because that's all family on New Rand Road. So, I do not want to see anything that's coming that's going to tear down the neighborhood and destroy it, devalue the property, bring heartache and headaches to the neighbors. And yes, the ABC store, when they put there, I went to, I came to the meetings, I discussed that because I was living there. And there were some days when I had to force people to stop so I could turn in the driveway. I mean, I just literally had to pull in front of people to stop so I could get into the house because they were not going to let me in. They were trying to get in the ABC store. And I said, well, you're not getting in there until I get in my house. And I had to just pull up and just stop in the middle of the road to keep people from, keep me from turning into the driveway. So, the traffic is terrible. It was bad then and it's bad now. And I'm still down there. And I still, now, we drive, Freddie would drive around the house. My dad, if my dad was alive, he would not allow him to drive around the house to get out of yard. They drive around the house and cherish me over every time I go there, see where they coming around the house. Because we weren't allowed to do that traffic, no traffic. We didn't go around the house on his grass. But that's the only way they can feel like they can get out safely to get out into, on New Rand Road, is to drive around the house and pull out instead of backing out because people don't respect them. And it was there then and it's still the same way now, even though they moved the driveway down further.
So, I don't want to prolong this, and you've explained it pretty well, I think. But, so, I'm understanding you to say that notwithstanding, what, five of the siblings, and I come from a family of several siblings and we've dealt with some property issues. But anyway, I understand you to say that notwithstanding the preferences of the five, the brother who is the executor has, is aware of that, but yet he has moved in the direction of...
He has moved in direction. Like I said, we all, we're still discussing it. And like I said, we're waiting. When he come, he's supposed to come here to sign the papers, I guess, to sign their document legally. But hopefully, by the time he get there, the rezoning and everything would have taken place and we wouldn't have a better idea of what's going in the neighborhood. That's what we were, that's what the other five of us were discussing. So, we're waiting for him. When he come, whenever that is deemed that he has to come to sign the papers, hopefully we will be in a better position to say, yeah, let's go ahead and sign. Let's get this over with. Let's go ahead and do this. But right now, we're not there. And I'm speaking for the other four.
Okay, thank you. Okay, young lady, you're up. And look, I'm not a bad guy. I just like to maintain order.
No, no, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were calling me up to answer a question. I'm sorry for the misconception.
Welcome to Garner.
I'm glad to be here. And congratulations on your basketball team. What an awesome win in that tournament. And that was, there were some players. Okay, just a couple of responses. One, you know, it's our opinion as the prospective developers that we do have this property under contract. I've examined the will and Milton Hennett was left the property outright, not as the executor, but, and I know this is not your problem to, you know, to arbitrate this family dispute. It might have to go to, it might end up in court. But it's been our opinion that the property was properly under contract. But more importantly, we don't think we're going to destroy this neighborhood. We plan what we think will probably be a retail use and hopefully will be a complement to the neighborhood. It's supposed to be neighborhood-scale retail. They'll be providing goods and services that will be walkable for the neighbors. There'll be, I'm sure, some sidewalk improvements. There'll be road improvements as dictated by the TIA that might improve the traffic situation. I mean, this part, the northern part of this neighborhood already has significant commercial. There's an ABC store, there's a barber shop, there are two commercially-used lots for a pool business right now, which is, you know, it's not the prettiest use and it really is not a neighbor beneficial use. It's a business. So, this, that will go away and something that will be more neighbor-friendly will come there. You know, churches in the neighborhood, which is a wonderful thing, but that's, as you probably know, one of the more intensive land uses you can have because they have meetings seven days a week. You know, but I'm hearing the negativity and also I can hear, read on your faces some concerns, counsel. And it may be that despite our preference that we get a vote on this tonight, maybe we're better to wait for Garner Forward. And I think, you know, based on our analysis tonight, we'd be willing to defer it and let the Garner Forward plan go forward if that would be acceptable to counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, y'all ready to vote on it? Are we hearing for a minute? Is that it? Are we hearing? Yeah, okay.
We have, Ms. Maddox made a suggestion to us. So, we've got an item that's on the agenda, request an action. What is the, what's the appropriate strategy here, Bill? Is that to table or deny? Or what is the appropriate action? I'm intending more to table.
Motion to table would be fine.
We moved to table the recommended action. No specific date in mind to bring it back.
Motion to second. Other discussion?
Discussion. I would just, I respect what Ms. Kennedy's done. The only question I have is whether or not there should be some time reference as to when we would deal with this matter again. I mean, we can't tell for indefinitely.
My logic is simply this. The next thing, it's not going to come back up before this whole matter of the comp plan is brought to us. And so, then when the action of the comp plan takes place, up or down, on this particular item, the request before us is move, it's over with. If I'm not, it answers this particular question and the other three quadrants all at the same time. So, we're making no decision on it tonight, up or down. We're just pushing that aside and letting, there's going to be a proposal.
Down the road.
Now, in the next sixty to ninety days, it's going to come before us. It may be tweaked before it comes back to us. I have no idea what it'll look like. But regardless, what we're doing tonight is, it is not trying to preempt and guess ahead for the subsequent action on the, two to three months down the road. If you want to do that, vote the, vote the motion down and, and whatever action you take tonight sends a signal to staff of what you're going to do down the road. But I, the simplest thing in this fairytale to both parties is to table this action and then let the normal process take its course. But now, I'm not going to be, you're not going to offend me by whatever action you take. I, I think this is the appropriate one and given all the discussion that's been had, I think the people in the audience, they're, I've got to put this in, Ms. Dunston? When you, you snookered us a little bit, young lady. You said, you said this was, all the actions were tonight were incomprehensible, but you sure are a master of the English language.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're to be commended for the, the presentation. You, that's all right, we, we probably understood what you were, when you said it was incomprehensible. You had a good handle on it, young lady. But whatever you want to do, that's one motion and it can, if there was a second, that's fine, vote it up or down.
I tend to, I thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your explanation. I, I tend to, I'm probably going to vote for the motion, I think that's probably a reasonable thing. I just wanted to make sure that the council, or at least I had an understanding as to when the issue would, would revitalize itself, as it were. And so it makes sense that it would do so after this council has taken action on Garner Forward, I guess.
But Jackie, you have a question, I want to hear what you've got to say.
Well, it was in relation to what you said, and I'm fine with the motion.
Okay. I'm not trying to push something down. I think we're doing what the advocate wanted and I think we're doing what the people wanted.
Well, I think it'd be the best to do it this way because it's unrest and some of them may not understand, and it's quite a few of the people that's not here tonight and it's going to counter the weather. And I'm quite sure the rest of them would have had something to say, but they heard what they want us here, so your motion is in order.
Let me make something very clear, though, to all the people here and the people who watch it on TV. Whether it's changed to a proposed neighborhood commerce center or proposed to a neighborhood activity center, either way, what they have said they are considering to do with the property still requires a zoning change, no matter what one it is. The biggest difference, I think, Mr. Trezenberg said, between the two neighborhood activity center and the proposed neighborhood commerce center is you're taking all multifamily out. That's the biggest thing. You can still do what they're proposing in either one, so if we change the map or don't change the map, they can still do the retail. But the biggest thing is, is it would consider, it would be rezoning. So whether we adopt this plan or Garner Forward gets adopted, Mr. Hennett, you asked about what it would affect you tonight, it wouldn't affect anything. If we approve it tonight or it gets approved in six weeks or six months, until it gets rezoned, nothing, nothing will change, because your two oh five is and two oh three are both residential. But, you know, whether it was adopted, is this, this neighborhood commerce or neighborhood activity, doesn't matter, because what they're proposing can go in either one, but the big thing will be a rezoning. That's the biggest part right there. So I just want to let you know that, tabling this, you know, they could still, if Garner Forward didn't get adopted for two years, they could still come forward and try to rezonate the property for the uses they're looking. So not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. So postponing is fine, I have no trouble with postponing, I'm just letting you know. Rezoning is the key to everything.
Okay, bud.
Maybe one last comment for both. If a vote was taken tonight, I can pretty well predict where it would head. And I think that's, the action we're taking is reflective of the discussion. I have no idea what the vote's going to be in sixty to ninety days, really don't. I would, the one phone call that I had about the action tonight was, they did not understand the ramifications, they didn't understand the process. And I can, I learned something tonight in due course of the discussion. It's, every time you have one, you, if you're listening, you're going to learn something new. But the one thing that I would suggest is that the, that when we have subsequent discussions at whatever stages, if we can eliminate the issue of, I didn't know what was planned, I didn't know what was going on, if, that's a tall order to try to overcome that, but I think that's, I think it's to the benefit of the people that, that are both pro and con, is to have a full understanding of what's being proposed. And we're, I'll leave it at that. Whatever information that you got on your mind that you can share with the public is, makes for a better resolution ultimately, that serves both sides better. Communication's a big issue.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? What about Salai?
Hi.
All opposed?
Motion's tabled. Or the action's tabled.
We're going to take a ten minute break, y'all, tires. Ten minute break.
for the purpose of initiating the first conversation on the memorandum of understanding between the town and the fire department.
Very good, progress. Thank you. Rodney, you ready?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have our info in front of you, if you have any questions. Mr. Hodges sent out a notification through email letting you know that we got correspondence from Department of Transportation pertaining to the environmental study for 540 and that that was completed, the approval for that was completed several months ahead of time and that right now we're in a comment period, but that was good news as far as the schedule is concerned. And that was for the study of the orange route area and some of the other, other routes So just want to let you know about that. Just a reminder of the TCC chat on the seventeenth at nine o'clock.
At nine, not, not eight?
No, I have nine o'clock on my calendar.
Okay.
Here, so that's, we will verify that, but that's what I have. Yeah, nine AM.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Is that upstairs?
Upstairs in the training room, correct. And then also later on that afternoon, there'll be the, the real estate conference by NAI Carolantic. So it'll be, that'll be a busy day for us. And the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is, back at the meeting in November sixth, we had a conditional use permit for Country Walk subdivision, the master plan. And through that process, there was a condition placed on the, the permit that stated, no certificates of occupancy shall be issued until the recommendations of the consultant for road improvements in the intersection of Ackerman, Hebrew and Church, White Oak Roads are approved by the town staff and council. In mid-December, the planning department released the RFQ for the work that's anticipated as a part of the condition number seven. And so we got responses from qualified firms, they were due back December twenty-third and we're still, I guess, vetting those. But basically, we feel as a staff, and I think the UDO allows us to do this at the staff level, that we think that that condition was satisfactorily completed to a point that it, it should, you know, release the applicant from any further conditions. So unless there's any other reason the council might want to bring before me, from a staff level, we're going to release the, the project from that condition since we're in the, in the motion of getting that traffic study and all of those other area assessments done.
Very good.
Any, any comments?
That traffic study will need to be done by sometime in the summer in order to apply through the campo, through the process of the, I can't think of the name of the funds.
The lap, lap funding.
Lap funding, thank you.
Did you have anything to add? As far as the timing of when we expect to get this process rolling?
The lap process usually kicks off in October, so hopefully, while we might not be a hundred percent complete, that we would be complete to a point that we could make that application.
Just as long as people know that we're working toward a type of plan to address the issues out there that were so mentioned at the meeting.
So based on your comments, staff is going to release the applicant from that condition number seven that was proposed at the November sixth council meeting. And we will continue forward with the study and the hiring of a consultant to do the traffic impact study. All right? All right?
I understand you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Attorney?
Hello, sir.
Counsel member, let's start with Mr. Marsh, Mayor Protem.
Thing, Ms. Mayor, I only have one thing, or maybe two. I may be the only one, but I was going to see if other council members would be interested in doing what I'd call a, sort of a brief refresh of the use of our nice iPads. I've been using it some, but I still find there's some little quirks here and there that I don't quite figure out how to work my way around. And so I know we've had these brief training sessions before council meeting in the past, I'd be willing to do it again. But if I'm the only one, then I guess I just need to get with somebody in IT to do a little refresher, but, yeah.
Me too.
Okay, so at least three of us, I think, that would be interested in doing that. I don't know, should I get in touch with IT or the town clerk? You, okay, you'll do that and see, see what you can set up.
We'll have the assistant town manager, Roy Lance, get in contact with IT and set that up. Think he's done that in the past, so.
Yeah, I think a forty-five minute refresher or something probably would be helpful.
Okay.
Forty-five minutes to an hour, may not take that long, but.
Okay.
Okay. And then I think before we meet again, something that's been occurring for the last several years, I forget which annual one it is, but encourage all council members who can to attend the MLK celebration that's going to take place on the fourteenth, Sunday at four PM at the, at the GPAC. The mayor's served on that committee years past and I'm serving a little bit on that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, that's all I have for now.
Kathy?
Yes, sir, I noticed today, took a good look down Creach Road and the east side of Creach Road headed north has been trimmed by Public Works, they've done a great job and the overgrowth is off of the highway. And then I also wanted to add, Mr. Single suggested that we approach DOT about removing the left turn lane on Creach Road, have we gotten any feedback from them?
Have talked to Mr. Chalk about that and he believes that, he's going to follow up with them on that, but he believes that because that was added due to school traffic sometime in the past, that he would be doubtful that it would be removed, because although it's not much, it does provide some stacking for the school. So his, his assumption was that they would probably be hesitant and staff might, would also recommend, you know, that we, we consider the, the stacking for the school, but he will follow up, he will let me know when he's followed up on that.
I would appreciate that, because on the other hand, when a school bus is making a right turn headed west or making a right turn on Creach Road, they cannot make that turn without going over the curb.
Right.
The tight, the tight lanes are a problem on both ways. And you only talk about stacking in the afternoon, school is at, it's not, not five o'clock traffic time, it's after three thirty or so. So if, I mean, the turn lane can still be there, it just needs to be two, three, 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 four lots down, it should just be a two lane road. But it is hard and, you know, I go by to the high school every day, buses turning down Clifford Road on New Bethel Truck Road, there's a hole we could bury half this desk in, because they have to turn onto the dirt, they can't make the turn.
Well, once he's heard back from them, we'll let you know.
Awesome.
Okay.
Not related to what we had tonight, but anyway, about New Rand Road, if you're traveling east on Smith Drive, you come to the stop sign, New Rand Road, if you're making a sharp turn, you'll go in the ditch, you're going south on New Rand Road. New Rand Road belongs to the county, state does.
Correct, that's a state road.
And we do anything, they allow us to do anything, because I was sitting there today and a lady turned her back wheel, went in the ditch, she was lucky she had enough speed to keep the car going, keep it getting stuck.
We can take a look at it, I mean, since it, Smith is a town street, New Rand's a state road, I mean, we'll take a look and see what can be done on our end or if we can contact DOT. I guess whatever we do, we'll have to make sure it doesn't affect the drainage of the, out there, because I know there's been drainage issues there in the past, so we don't want to affect that. But it's something we can look at.
Yeah. Also, I had a call today, I don't know whether this has come up while I was out, is there any moves towards putting a sheik's on the corner of ten ten and Old Stage Road?
Um, ten ten and Old? I've heard it's going to happen.
I, I don't know anything about that.
Whereof?
Yeah, I don't know anything about.
Well, what, a couple of years ago, they cleared that corner off, someone did. And I got a call today, said they heard there was a sheik doing that, but there is nothing coming to the town.
That's outside the town, is that in the town's planning jurisdiction now?
It's across the street from the school.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. So I don't, have you got anything, information on that, Jeff? No, we're not aware of anything.
Okay. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to get to the meeting tonight, we're sitting in some traffic, trying to get here. I got off on Jones Office Road about six fifteen, a school bus went past right before me. School bus stopped in front of East Corner Elementary at six sixteen and let off two students at six sixteen. And one of them had to be an elementary student, because he was, he was a young fellow. And there was a car across the street waiting to pick one of the students up. At six sixteen, it was six sixteen, the dark, they're being dropped off. Now, I know elementary school ends, most elementary schools are going to end around three thirty-ish, I don't know when they got on the bus, where that bus went. And I'm, I'm just saying, and I'm sure not the only bus in Wake County that's dropping off students after six o'clock. But how surprised I was, and all of a sudden the flashing, you know, lights came on in front of me and I thought, this bus is going to stop. I thought he's going to turn into East Corner Elementary, now they dropped off two, two students. So, you know, and it's dark out there, there's no streetlights in that area, but he did, the bus driver did pull in front of the big driveway in front of the school, wouldn't let off the two students anyway. I just thought it was very concerning that letting off, letting off students anywhere at that late and dark, particularly on a, on a road that is, it's improved on that side of the road, but again, there's no streetlights, it is dark out there, I just think people, you know, no matter what the law says and how it can affect your insurance points, people still will pass to stop school bus. So I just wanted to report to you that scene that night was really caught me off guard. So.
Bud?
A couple of things, I've been remiss in, in recognizing Public Works for fixing some sidewalk issues that had been disrupted through tree roots and along Thompson Road and into a couple of subdivisions. I'm glad that's done. It's, it just makes it a lot better for people, there's plenty of people that walk.